We're here. All right, let's get going. It is six thirty and welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. This is October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. I want to again extend the welcome for everybody who's here. This meeting is now called to order and first order business if you would. If you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a brief moment of silence. All right, everyone, you may be seated. And just a reminder, a note why we're, I say all of us are dressed in pink tonight is for breast cancer awareness in the month of October. So if you've recognized that in your prayers and thoughts tonight for those who have survived that and those that might not have. So appreciate that. All right, any changes requested to tonight's agenda is published? Hearing unseen, none. Have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda is published.
All right, motions up. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Very good. All right, general public comments. We have two signed up to speak tonight. And if I'm reading it right, you got Nicole Gruet. If you'd like to approach the podium up there, snuggle up close to the mic so we can all hear you. Tell us your name and where you live and whether or not you're resident. And you got three minutes and Ms. Barbie in the pink there will help you out on that. Thank you, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Nicole Gruet and I'm a resident in Inverness on Providence. I'm here tonight to speak specifically on the issues surrounding the Adelina development and its impact on the Marvin School Cluster. I have been a public educator for a decade of my life in New York City, New Jersey, and Charlotte. I have worked in classrooms with more students than desks and no physical room to put the desks. From my experience, I can tell you that the effects of overcrowding lands on the shoulders of our teachers, our administrators, and support staff, the very people who show up each and every day for our children. Considering the issues around teacher recruitment and retainment, it is reckless to effectively increase the housing density without solutioning for the overcrowding in our schools. In November of two thousand and twenty-two, the Planning Department was made aware by the Director of Facilities of Union County Public Schools of the existing issues that would be intensified by the creation of additional residencies. They include additional mobile classrooms, inadequate capacity for food service and restroom facilities, rationing of access to the media center, insufficient parking to safely allow the delivery and pickup of students, and inadequate planning and meeting spaces for additional personnel. These are serious problems that need to be solved for if we're going to effectively increase the density of the zoning. Given the fact that issues regarding school capacities were brought up that seem in direct opposition to what has been indicated in previous town meetings, I hope that our board moves to delay a vote on Adalina until these issues are resolved. Our children do not get a vote. They depend on the adults in the room to include their best interests in decision-making. This is an opportunity for our board to show up for the children in Waxaw and demonstrate that phrases like "we support our schools" are not hollowed-out platitudes that we tell each other to make us feel better. Families in town are tired of the finger-pointing and are looking to town officials to work together with our schools to solve our residents' concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, if we still have this right, do I see it as Aika Gruet? There you go. Come on up, be brave. Again, tell us who you are, where you live.
Hello, my name is Leah Gruet. I'm an eighth grader at Marvin Ridge Middle School. I live in Inverness on Providence. And I'm here to talk about my concerns about the Adalina development, the concerns that it will bring. The school is already at full capacity and this has resulted in buses leaving students behind in the morning and afternoon. Additionally, the high school is struggling with a lack of classrooms, which forces the use of trailers in the middle school parking lot. There's been multiple unwanted interactions between the middle and high schoolers because of this. Furthermore, the school has led to a shortage of T-shirts. My math class this year was tandem learning. The students, the number of students in Math One were so high and there wasn't enough teachers, so our class was divided. And every other day, we had to substitute with online learning. I've experienced many of these problems firsthand. For example, because of the understaff at Marvin, it has been very difficult to meet with the counselor. I've struggled with drama and mental health this year, and it was extremely hard to set up meetings with her. I've also struggled in math class with focusing, and it wasn't just me. Many students in my math class struggled tremendously as well. This is shown on test scores and other classwork assignments. With new students arriving, there would be a lot more of tandem learning classes. These problems are already present today. Kids are struggling on a day-to-day basis with buses, lack of teachers, and many other issues with the school being at full capacity. So adding additional students to the school would lead to overcrowding and cause issues that will, that used to be tolerable to something extremely severe. Please take this into consideration while arranging these new developments and homes. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we'll move over to the consent agenda tonight. I'm looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, motions up. All in favor?
Aye.
Enamis all the way around. All right, we're gonna drop down to recognitions, first one. We'll hand the mic over to Town Manager Jeff Wells.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Deborah, come on up. So Deborah Conrad is the President of Conrad Capital Inc. LLC. She's a registered lobbyist with the state of North Carolina and happens to be Waxaw's lobbyist. It's a role she seamlessly fits into because she has years of experience in both state and local government. She was Forsyth, she was a Forsyth County Commissioner from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and twelve. She served in the NC House of Representatives from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty. When she left the House is when she started Conrad Capital Inc. We're in our second full year of working with her and experiencing the benefits of having a seasoned professional working and advocating for the town and our needs for local funding. There were many people that contributed to our efforts in this state budget cycle for state funding and were all part of how successful it was. But Deborah was the key to that. She was the key contributor. She advised us on the best path forward for success, and the town listened and provided her the resources she needed to advocate and get us appropriation money. The town is extremely happy with the results and deeply thanks her for her efforts. I asked her to come down today, took her out to dinner, and then provide her an opportunity to be recognized by everybody here because she really deserves it. And just want to say how much we appreciate all that you've done for the town and how much I appreciate and have enjoyed working with you. Just so the public that doesn't know, the town received four point seven five million in state funding in this year's state budget for several different project needs, public safety, equipment needs, parks and rec, police, public safety, and a project out of the school for crosswalk. And the year before that, the town received six hundred thousand dollars in park money that went to our downtown park. And we already discussed this evening, looking ahead for the next budget cycle. So I've got my marching orders from her of how we start to advance that forward, and we'll be doing that. So again, just want to say how much we appreciate all of your efforts in advocating for Waxaw.
Certainly a round of applause for helping us get there.
Well, I appreciate this opportunity. I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to represent a town like Waxaw and Raleigh. When I first came to visit here, and you know, I've been in your seats for many, many years, I knew what a well-run town this was and what good stewards you were for taxpayer funds. And I really appreciate, I guess it's been really about only eighteen months that Leslie Mazingo of Strategics, who was your federal lobbyist, reached out to me because she specializes up in DC. And I know my way around the buildings in Raleigh. And she said, you think there's anything the state could do for Waxaw? And I said, you bet there is. I said, and I'll go do it. And it's really been a pleasure. You have a wonderful delegation down there. Senator Johnson, Representative Willis, who I've gotten to know, Representative Brody, he and Representative Dean Art were in my freshman class. So they're good friends of mine. It's a wonderful team. And there were so many others down there I talked to. This has really been a team effort. The senior appropriation chairs like Representative Strickland, Representative Elmore, chairmen of committees for public safety and transportation. I didn't leave any stone unturned to make sure that everybody knew what Waxaw needed. And I can't say enough about this fellow that's sitting behind me. Jeff Wright, he actually listened and he actually followed all the instructions and put together a very impressive presentation piece that really was very easy for the legislators to understand. And I was really pleased that you got two of your top five projects because they were in order, as you know, of priorities. So to get the water and sewer project and also the funds to buy the property for your community center. And the format's great. And Jeff Wright, we talked about a little how to go forward in the short session. This week, they are ending the long session. They're working on the new political districts right now, and they plan to adjourn until maybe the last week of November. And that's just sort of a safety valve in case they have to come back on the districts. But then they'll go into campaign mode, which I know you are in right now, so you understand. And we'll get the lay of the land who we'll be dealing with down the road, whether your delegation stays the same. There's some turnover, we just don't know yet, who might be running for higher offices or retiring. You just never know. But the short session will begin after the primary, and we'll have opportunities to negotiate and talk more about Waxaw, get to know your delegation better, and see what we can do for you in the short session in the budget. And then also, I move legislation as well. If there's anything you ever need in Raleigh as far as bills being passed, you can work on that as well. But I'd love this opportunity to come down here and have dinner with the mayor again and talk how to proceed. But I'm so happy that so many of your important projects were funded, and we will just see what we can do down the road. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deborah. Appreciate that.
Hey, Ms. Conrad, I just wanted to, wanted to say, there's a, so there's a nice lady in town, Nicole Jordan. Her grandmama was the first female mayor of Waxaw. I'm told the first female mayor in Union County. And she was recounting a story how her grandmama fought real hard to get a little tiny sign up on Providence in four eighty-five that pointed to Waxaw. And I'm just wondering what she would think now to hear the town is being talked about in Raleigh. It's quite a thing. Thank you very much.
Great effort. Again, if you want to, or you want to speak further. This is from her guidance coming in. This presentation piece was what helped us at least get in front of and sit in front of all the legislators in Raleigh. It was a very professional piece. It was to the point, and we all got to present it to each one of the legislators. I think that was a big part of how this worked in our benefit. So preparation, relationships, long-term relationships as well, and having the right people in the right places, that's what gets things done. So, great piece. Thank you. All right, next up, I have Chief Dexter Wilson. You're up again with his pink tie on today. You made sure I knew that.
Good evening. So tonight, we'd like to recognize Donnie Rogers. He came to us from Lancaster County Sheriff's Office five years ago. The last five years, he's accomplished so much, and I'm just so proud he's come here. And he brings a lot of experience, and he's a real good asset for the younger guys especially, to show them what to do. We'd like to present you with your five-year service award.
Like all of our other members of our team, we see Donnie and his team all over Waxaw. So say hi to them when you see them. Chief, you're up again.
So tonight, we're recognizing Sergeant George Wally for his, receiving his intermediate certificate. He could not make it tonight. He had a last-second emergency that he had to go to. But we still wanted to recognize that he has received his intermediate, which is a pretty big accomplishment, as you know, over six hundred and forty hours of law enforcement classes and nine years of service. He came to us from New York City Police, then went to Matthews Police for a while, and then realized that life was a little better down in Waxaw. So we're very fortunate to have him and grateful that he's received his intermediate.
That's great. Well, tell him congratulations for us. All right, so next up, Mr. Matt Hubert in the pink shirt, gonna talk to us about, one is his team members.
Very good. Good evening. Thank you. I want to represent for Orion here, his five-year service award as well. He came to us from the public sector, and I think he's leaving all that behind, and we're happy to have him. Congratulations on five years.
Five years, Orion, if you want to. You can take your wife's lead. All right, if you want to say something, feel free to. We're not gonna let you run away. You don't think that. All right, congratulations on that. Five years already. That goes by very fast. All right, tonight we have presentations. The Central Lina Regional Council overview the presentation by Geraldine Gardner. So welcome to the Executive Director of the Central Lina Regional Council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you and to the Commissioners, Mr. Wells, Mr. Buckley, and Mrs. Bruce. I am Geraldine Gardner. I'm the Executive Director of Central Lina Regional Council, formerly known as the COG. You might remember us. I'm here with my colleague Joe Solico. Joe is a Waxaw resident and our Community Economic Development Specialist at Central Lina. Tonight, I'm gonna give you a very brief overview about our organization and talk about some of our upcoming activities. This year, we're celebrating fifty-five years of service to this region. And we had the opportunity to have a great conversation with Mr. Wells and the mayor a few weeks ago as we were going out across the region to meet with our local governments and to hear about your successes and to think about how we can better serve you as members of our organization as we meet our regional challenges. Jeff thought it would be a great idea to come and share with the rest of the Board what we're up to. Commissioner Maury represents you on our Board of Delegates, and the mayor participates in our Committee on Advancing the Plan, which is our Regional Mobility Strategy. But some of you might know, might not know what we do and how we can contribute to your agenda here. We're a growing organization. We've got fifty staff and six departments. We're guided by a three-year strategic plan, and we're governed by a Board of Delegates, which represents the sixty-three local governments that are a part of Central Lina. So I want to talk a little bit about our vision. So our vision as an organization is to be a collaborative organization and a trusted partner. We know without building relationships with our local governments and with our stakeholders in Raleigh and in Washington and across the region, we really can't lead our region towards a thriving future, which is our goal. And our mission as an organization is to do the big-picture regional thinking, but also to be that spark for action locally. And everything we do is about expanding opportunity and improving quality of life for our communities. The work that we do is really organized in three major areas. The first is really what we do at the big-picture regional scale. So what are those big challenges that we're all facing in our communities regardless of size and scale? And we're helping to lead engagement, to prepare and act on issues that are facing us today, but also thinking about what's coming in the future. So our work to create a five-year comprehensive regional economic development strategy is an example of this. We have our Regional Mobility Plan called Connect Our Future, which are, or Connect Beyond, which we'll talk about in a second. And a couple of other opportunities that are coming up this year that we'd love to work with you on and others in the region. Broadband and digital inclusion planning, setting a blueprint for the region that will enable you as local governments to access some of the federal funds that are coming for broadband expansion. And also looking at regional air quality and emissions reductions. Again, setting a regional blueprint so that our local governments can access federal funds that will allow you to do the work that you want to do in your community. That could be expanding your trails. It could be converting your fleets to different types of energy. It could be installing LED lights in City Hall in your new facility. So these are some of the activities. As we plan regionally, we also try to think about what's the impact on the ground in communities. Support to local governments is our second area of focus. We do this in a number of areas. We have really great experts in planning and economic development and community development. Our work right now is really focused on trying to meet our communities where their service needs are. You're a thriving, well-run community. You have different needs in some of our smaller communities that need more handholding and support. We're doing a lot of work in our high-capacity communities, which I would consider Waxaw, in strategic planning, in affordable or attainable housing planning, in economic development planning, in thinking about professional development for your staff. So we try to adapt our service areas to the needs that you might have for your community. Our third service area is supporting our constituents in Waxaw and beyond in the areas of aging and workforce development. So we are the Area Agency on Aging for the Region. We work with the Union County Council on Aging. We also deliver direct services to your constituents. And in our region, this is so important because our fastest-growing demographic are individuals over the age of fifty-five. So if we're not helping them directly through our services and also helping you as local governments prepare to meet the needs of these constituents, then we're not doing our job of thinking ahead and planning for the future. We're also the Workforce Development Board for the region, so we help to provide career services to businesses and direct career placement for your constituents. So just want to highlight a couple quick projects that might be of interest. I had a read-through of your comprehensive plan draft earlier today. It's a wonderful piece of work. You've got a really talented planning team here to get a sense of some of the issues that are on your radar and on your horizon. And wanted to remind all of you of our Connect Beyond Regional Mobility Plan. We're really working not only at the big-picture implementation of this plan, but also how we're helping our local governments do the work that you want to do to expand mobility choices and connections. So this could be trail planning. It could be thinking about mobility hubs in your community, accessing state and federal grants. So this is really a vision for how our region can improve transportation choices and connections, again, with local applications. And the mayor's representing you well on our committee to think about further implementation actions. Another major focus of our work is on supporting local governments with grants. We call it the federal faucet right now, like it or not, regardless of your perspective on what's happening in Washington. There's a lot of money flowing into our communities. We're trying to do as best we can to support our local governments in understanding the aspects and the landscape of grants. So we have information on our member portal. We have a professional development program called Central Lina Learns that has at least two sessions a year on grants. And we do grant strategy advising. Just because there's a lot of money out there doesn't mean that you're always the best qualified and have the best application. So really sitting down and making a plan for how to meet your needs through federal and state grants and coming up with a grant strategy is something we focus on. We also offer grant development, so grant writing services, and we do grant administration for our communities as well. So lastly, I just want to wrap up with a few points. We'd love to engage more of you and engage more of your staff in our work. We have a number of activities. Your state lobbyist mentioned Leslie Mazingo, who we also work with on our federal advocacy on behalf of the region. We have an online member portal with a full library of training offerings on a range of topics. And in your packet, I included the flyer for our current Central Lina Learns offering. We do data and economic modeling as a service, just as a, if that is something that you're in need of as in need of as you continue to implement your comprehensive plan. And as I mentioned, we're going to be ramping up a number of regional planning activities in digital inclusion and air quality. So we really look forward to having Waxahau involved, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about our work.
It's a great organization, and it is growing. And that leadership team that you have, yourself included, obviously, has really organized a lot of the region's leadership teams. I think in our meeting on Friday, we probably had 10 different agencies, different municipalities, all the way up through Tony Lethrup at DOT, and certainly Mayor Lyles is on that as well, co-chairs that with the mayor from Kannapla. So we've got some great minds in that room, and it's really, again, the relationship building that this region needs. And it's going to make a big difference in how this plays out. We're growing. A lot of things weren't looked at the same way before, and now we get a better look with some very, very strategic people in the room. So I do appreciate that a lot. Thank you for letting me attend those, if you will. Any questions for our presenter tonight? All the way around. Geraldine, thank you both very much to come over tonight. We have Waxahau resident there, so I like that part.
You can call him anytime.
Yes, we will. We'll find, we know where you live.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to drop down to CSX Railroad closures coming up right at us in the next week or so. We're going to be faced with a few opportunities to test our driving skills. Mr. James Kelly, our traffic and transportation.
Good evening. So tonight, we're just going to be providing a few updates on the upcoming CSX intersection closure at NC-16 and NC-75. This closure is expected to start Monday, October 30th, at approximately 9:00 a.m. and will likely continue through the end of Friday. So just a quick overview, this is not related to any work that the town of Waxahau is doing. This is more so of a maintenance work area for CSX. So this is not related to any work done by the town. It's solely responsible by the CSX Railroad. Again, this will occur Monday, October 30th, and will continue through November 3rd. And it's located at the intersection of NC-16 and NC-75. This will likely result in a major impact to local and regional traffic. So just be wary while you're driving out there. Be cautious. Heed the detours and follow the detours if possible. You will see a huge impact to local and regional traffic during this week. So general location, this was provided by CSX. On the very bottom there is us, is Waxahau. So the CSX original detour plan, before we started to talk more in depth with those representatives, was to detour from Weddington to Monroe back to Waxahau. That's a 50-minute-long detour. So that detour is currently in place and is able for people to take. However, after speaking more with their representatives and working with Southern Commercial, as well as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, we're providing a few more alternative routes that'll hopefully be less than 50 minutes long.
And that's in the blue and the red. That's, you're going to show us, right?
Correct. Correct. So on the western side, this is the detour from 16. So if you're coming south on 16, you would take Gray Byram Road over to Waxahau Marvin, head all the way down to Rehoboth. That's the simplest way to get around on the west side. If you're going north and south, they're on 16. Alternatively, you can take Kensington. However, working with NC DOT, they are encouraging that you follow state routes. However, Kensington is also an option to get back over to 16. This is an approximate 10 to 15-minute detour. Note, that's without traffic, so plan accordingly. If they're, if you're leaving in the morning or coming home in the afternoon, expect greater times as far as travel times. So just be on the lookout for that. Note that NC DOT has also recently closed Bonsgrove Church Road. This happened this past week. We were notified last Friday. They closed Bonsgrove Church Road to perform some pipe replacement project. So they're currently performing some culvert work, culvert-related work. It's expected to continue through November 3rd as well. So you will not be able to use Bonsgrove Church Road as a means to get over. You will be redirected to Gray Byram. So all these are state roads except for Kensington, so that's how you can get around on the west. On the east, you're looking at moving out towards McNeely Road and Collins Road. You can do this by, I'll show the exhibit here shortly, but you can follow Waxahau Indian Trail Road to Howie Mine to reach NC-16. Again, an approximate 10 to 15-minute detour without traffic, so plan accordingly. If there, if you're leaving at a peak hour, peak rush hour in the morning or in the afternoon, it's probably going to be longer than that. An alternative would be to continue north on Waxahau Indian Trail Road to Newtown Road or further north to reach Route 84, Weddington Road. So here's a little detail of that as far as how you can get around to the east. So if you're coming in from Monroe, you can take McNeely. You can take Collins. You can take over to Waxahau Indian Trail, and that will get you back to 16. As far as downtown, local traffic, we're prioritizing North Church Street for just local traffic, business traffic, emergency services, that sort of thing. Local traffic can utilize North Church Street as a temporary detour. That's shown in the purple line there. Just follow NC-16 down to North Church Street to reach NC-75 over to South Main Street. Again, an approximate 5 to 10-minute detour without traffic. With traffic, you're looking closer to maybe 15, 20 minutes plus in addition to that. Just note that this route is not recommended for our larger vehicles. It's ideal for strictly local traffic only. Larger vehicles should be redirected to those NC DOT routes. So summary, no requested board action tonight. This is just an informational item only. This intersection will be closed October 30th through November 3rd, so this is next week. You can still travel east and west on NC-75. However, you won't be able to go north on 16. They're closing right, CSX will be closing the railroad there at that location. Drivers are advised to follow the NC DOT routes and roadways, and even though this closure is not related to townwork, the town of Waxahau will assist NC DOT and CSX with their various traffic control measures. And of course, you'll be on the lookout for various public communications and outreach. We should have a lot of communications going out already, and we'll continue to send those communications throughout this week and next week. So with that, any questions?
So again, the big, long route is because of longer tractor-trailer rigs, things like that, that wouldn't be able to easily maneuver through our local streets.
Correct.
Any questions, Jan?
I just have a comment since I think next week, we all need to sort of pack our patience if we need to drive downtown, and this would be a really good example or exercise as why we really need the Waxahau Parkway to have an alternative route to be able to make that connection.
I would agree. Really, there is no real good way to get around Waxahau, especially in cases like this, along with other cases, especially when you had to start having two-mile-long trains come through downtown. The really other alternative is to build a road extension and bypass around the town.
And that one part is in the works right now with CXX that we did a couple of years ago. So the west side Helms Road will have an overpass, so we wouldn't have to worry about necessarily anything maintenance-related from CSX.
That is correct. That's currently under construction at Torrey Path.
And we're working on the other side, too.
Yes, we are.
The other side, so appreciate that.
All righty.
Any other thoughts, comments? James, again, thank you very much. Like all the cooperative effort that we have between you guys, our staff, our PD, we're all going to be all hands on deck to be watching this. And if something is noticed that might need some attention, feel free to give us a call and make sure. So probably you can either call a town hall or in an emergency situation, call the PD, and we'll try to work it out. It's going to be very interesting. All right, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, this time, we're going to go into public hearings. I need a motion to open the public hearing, please.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
All right, that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed. Motion is passed. Janet?
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am Janet Perano. I'm a planner, too, for the town of Waxahau. I am here this evening to talk about a text amendment to our neighborhood meetings. So this petition is a request by the town of Waxahau Planning Department to amend Section 3.3.1B, Neighborhood Meeting Requirements, in the town's LCD. The amendment, amended text serves to clarify the purpose of the neighborhood meeting, provides a neighborhood meeting requirements policy, requires a neighborhood meeting report to be included with an application, and sets requirements for notices and signage. So let's talk a little bit about what a neighborhood meeting is. State statute outlines the requirements for conditional zonings and SUPs. It does not require a neighborhood meeting, but leaves that decision up to the individual zoning jurisdictions. In Waxahau, our land development code requires that all conditional zonings and special use permit applicants hold a neighborhood meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to provide an opportunity for the applicant to collaborate with the community on a project, and we have found that these meetings have not been achieving the required purpose. So how do we make meetings more productive? Staff looked for best practices by using the planning listserv, reaching, researching other municipal neighborhood meeting requirements, and speaking with other planning professionals. And so we are proposing the following changes. I do have a change in this slide based on some discussions that the planning department has had, since this has been put on the agenda. In item number one, the applicant shall hold a minimum of one neighborhood meeting, and the need for additional meetings will be determined by the zoning administrator. A neighborhood meeting shall occur after the pre-application meeting and no more than 60 days prior to application submittal. The pre-application meeting gives staff the opportunity to learn about the proposed land use change and to explain the town's processes to the developer and alert the developer to any anticipated community concern so that they can be prepared to address those concerns at neighborhood meetings. Holding the meeting prior to the application submittal allows the applicant to make changes based on community feedback before they submit the application. Meetings will be structured according to the Neighborhood Meeting Requirements Policy, and that policy will be provided to applicants at the pre-application meeting. Notification letters and signage have been standardized, and templates are included in the Neighborhood Meeting Requirements, and I'll go into more details about that in just a minute. And a report of the neighborhood meeting must be submitted with the formal application. And another slide will go into more about the requirements of that meeting report. And then the last thing is that the applicant, this is an applicant's meeting, so staff and town officials will not be present. Advice from our town attorney and the planning professionals that we spoke with was to exclude elected or appointed officials and town staff from neighborhood meetings. The purpose of these meetings is to allow for open dialogue about development between the applicant and the nearest affected neighbors, and the presence of officials or staff may stifle that free and open dialogue. So I know this is hard to see, but this is the policy document that will be reviewed at the pre-application meeting. It gives the applicant details about what is expected as far as the purpose, location, notifications, agenda topics, and the post-meeting report. Staff heard comments from the community about the signage, that it's too small, that it is not well-located, that it can be hard to read, and so we created a standard and a template for applicants to follow. Each sign will be 32 square feet in size and double-sided. If the proposed development site has frontage on more than one street, the applicant shall place a sign on each frontage. The sign shall be placed in a conspicuous location perpendicular to the road and traffic flow. Signs must be professionally printed in black and white and include the developer's name, date, time, and location of the meeting, and the sign shall be posted at least 10 days prior to the neighborhood meeting. As for the notification letters, state statute does not require mailed notifications. However, our land development code requires that we send notices or that the developers send notices to the owners and occupants of all properties that lie within 300 feet of the project site, as well as any homeowners' associations. We are keeping that LDC requirement in our policy document, and the mailing list, notification letters, and signage will be approved by staff prior to mailing or posting the signs. The agenda is to include an introduction of the applicant and their team, an explanation of the conditional zoning or special use permit process with a script that will be provided by our planning department, descriptions of the proposed project, time for any feedback from attendees, and then an explanation of how that feedback will be used. And then finally, the meeting report will include proof of mailings, the date, time, location of the meeting, attendees' names and their relationship to the project, and their contact information, feedback provided by the attendees, responses to the feedback, follow-up tasks that are discussed, and the time the meeting adjourned. And that meeting report will be a required component of the formal application packet. The planning board reviewed the text amendment on September 21st and unanimously recommended approval. With every text amendment, we are required to adopt a land use plan consistency statement, and staff has provided a draft statement for your review. No decisions to be made tonight. This is just the public hearing. We'll have the decision at the November 14th meeting. The only requested action tonight is to close the public hearing. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? There's this process thing again, so.
Yes.
I just had a question with regard to notification at 300 feet, and are we going to have the information about the HOAs that are going to be affected before or after this public meeting with the developer?
We will have information about the HOAs. Do you mean who to contact there?
So the concern has always been that, well, we didn't get the email, the owner's email was on there, they had no idea, and so on and so on, and there's a breakdown in that whole communication process.
Yes.
So to, for that way before any of this even starts is not only good for us, but residents at large.
And that's why we request that the developer provide the mailing list to us. We do have an updated list of HOA contacts. I think that in the past, sometimes mailings have gone out to management companies that may not be local, so people in the development weren't getting the information from the HOA. So we've updated that so that we have local contact information, and we'll also be reviewing the mailing list for individuals, property owners, and tenants that should be receiving notices.
I guess my concern is that we're actually speaking to a physical person as opposed to sending out an email that gets lost in, you know, the mail.
It is up to the developer to send out the messages or the mailings. We'll review the mailing list, and if you want, we can have staff contact the HOA.
My interest is just to ensure that someone gets it and someone at some point responds or forwards it on to their HOA, their community hub, whatever they're involved in. I just don't want to see us not be able to communicate that way and retain that for future reference. Whatever conversation comes afterwards, we need to be able to communicate effectively.
Pedro, just to kind of piggyback on what his comment is, I think that something might work good in terms of mailing is to see if we can bring that in-house. So rather than the developer be responsible, for us as a town, be responsible for making these notifications with a tract-certified letter so that we have actual documentation that those people has received that. And then we can actually probably charge a administration fee to the developer, not only for the postage, but for our staff's time to coordinate and coordinate all that. And that way, we would actually have a copy of that notification.
Charlie, Charlie, I see you on a weigh-in. I see you leaning.
I do. I just want to point out to the board that if you send a certified letter from the town of Waxahau, they will refuse it every time. They will not open it. And I know that from prior collection practices I used to be involved with. If you send out a collection letter and you send it certified, they won't, they won't accept it.
I think the onus should be on the developer.
And I agree with that, too. There shouldn't be any onus on the town. That's what the purpose of this new regulation is. But you're never going to get people to respond back to an official letter of any kind. That's just not going to happen.
Could that requirement be placed on the developer or the applicant?
Well, you could, but they're not going, they're still will refuse it. People will refuse certified letters all the time. They think, they don't know what it is, so they will refuse it.
The other part is that notification to now the HOAs is in addition to the mailings that go out to all the homes within those HOAs. So it's kind of a double notice that the, all of the owners within that mailing area get the notice. And in addition to that, if there is an HOA, their leadership team gets the notice, too.
Correct. And we also require proof of mailing from the developer so they can choose to send it out certified mail and give us copies of all the certified. out certified mail and give us copies of all the certified slips, or they can make copies of all the stamped envelopes and certify that they've been mailed out.
Is there a requirement, too, for them to post in the newspaper or some sort of media as well?
There is not a newspaper requirement, no. There's just the mailing and signage.
Something else that I was reading through the policy is it says invitation shall be sent ten days, but not more than twenty-five. Is there a way we can change that to fourteen and thirty?
Sure.
I mean, because ten days before, if you're looking at holidays or other things going on, I mean, is that really enough time, ten days before a meeting?
I would support that.
Okay. I will make that change.
I have one question.
Raci?
So on the staff attendance part, it says will not attend neighborhood meetings. I'm wondering if we need stronger language on that? I know that in the past, we have had town officials, board members show up to these meetings, which is really not appropriate. And so is this stating that it's a policy that they absolutely cannot go? Or are we kind of still being a little loosey-goosey on the language here that if they want to show up, they can?
Well, I mean, just along that same line, I think that we've seen some public meetings that have been held recently that we've heard the applicants making statements that the town said this or the town's requiring that. And how do we, I know, Charlie, your recommendation is that nobody from the town goes, and I certainly support that in terms of elected officials, but how do we combat the applicant saying things that the town would or wouldn't require to the public? Because then we hear it from the public saying that...
Well, that's the purpose of the public hearing, to clarify things. The public input occurs, elected officials and staff input occurs at the public hearing, which is what the public hearing is all about.
I think the concern is that at some point, the damage is done. Sometimes folks will go to these meetings, express their views, and that's it, and they've already formulated an opinion, and it won't change. Well, to wait for a public hearing, I guess we're just trying to see if there's a way to prevent that.
Well, the law only provides so much that you can do. And you cannot rely one-hundred percent on anybody doing anything, on something they receive or what was said by somebody. Those things we have no control over. Only thing we can do is the best we can. And so it's, let me give you another example, condemnations, which we'll talk about a little bit later tonight. There is a thirty-day notice of condemnation that is a condition precedent or is required prior to filing a condemnation by a town. But the law only requires that you send it, you send it certified mail requirement, but the law doesn't require that they receive it. If they refuse it or if they don't, for whatever reason they don't get it, it doesn't matter. It only requires the condemnor or the town to send that thirty-day notice. You can't put a burden on receipt of something because the public still has the right under their freedom of expression to deny something or to not want to accept it. So where the individual rights and the government oppression service, how does that get separated? Only thing we can do is the best we can in getting that notice. And overcoming developers, you have the right because the public surely is going to say something to you what the developer has indicated. You can grill the developer. You don't have to rely on what his comments are or on his community report. You can delve into it. You can ask him the questions when he comes in with his public hearing. You can delve into him, you know, to find out what really went on at that meeting.
Can we require those meetings to be, like, videotaped, recorded? Because we, again, we just had a situation where a developer said, we, you know, talked to the town. The town is requiring we do X, Y, and Z.
Well, the town's requirements are your regulations, your LDC. That's the only thing the town is requiring.
Again, to what Ann may be speaking to as well, the project had its neighborhood meeting, and from that neighborhood meeting, people reacted instead of going through or understanding the process that happens next. So if they had a comment, it would be then a responsibility, if they wanted to be heard, not to go to the media, not to go everywhere else. But again, as I always say in my meetings, we're the source of the information. So if anybody in any of those communities, no matter what it is, going forward or not, they then would have an incumbent responsibility to come to us with the question. And again, to your point earlier, the next step would be the public hearing where those people would get noticed again, and they could then bring their comments to it. I don't think we can deal with hearsay. I don't think that's appropriate to deal with and react. Unfortunately, that situation got off on the wrong foot in there because of what somebody said, somebody said, and I don't think that's appropriate for us to have to try to manage.
Correct. I agree with that.
So can we go back to what I...
Yes, ma'am. What was your question?
Stronger language.
Do we need stronger language? It's just about saying that absolutely no board members or planning board members or...
The board is still has rights as being a board member or a mayor or elected official. You cannot stifle that right. We could only give policy that it is not a good idea to do that.
Okay. They can still go if they feel very strong.
You will not upset the zoning process if you show up. It may upset somewhere along the line some kind of court action, but that won't upset the zoning process.
And again, that's important, too, is the reason why...
Correct.
...that we would not want to be a part of that because we may or may not have heard something at that meeting that shouldn't be able to influence us in making the final decision on that project or whatever the item is.
Well, I know in the past that I had asked Charlie, and his legal advice was that we should not, as a board, attend any type of community meeting for fear of showing any sort of bias for or against the project that could come to litigation as we make a decision.
That's correct. Now, that doesn't mean that anybody will raise the issue, and if the issue is raised, it doesn't automatically mean that the court will find against the ordinance that you adopted, but it is a potential. And you never know how a court, what they will, what they will hang their hat on as being something that offends them and rules against the ordinance. So don't put yourself in harm's way, yourself being the town, be put in harm's way by an innocent action, because it's always the little things and the innocent actions that results in stupid cases that resulted in law that's bad law, but it affects all municipalities throughout the state. So just don't put yourself in harm's way that might affect a court decision that creates bad law.
Is there any way we can incorporate that language into the statute? I think that's the stronger language he's looking for. Because basically, what we've said right now, or what you've said, is that basically there's no law that says you can't go, but it's not a good idea. So the stronger language that I think Commissioner...
I would leave all inferences alone and let people derive their own thoughts on what that says. I wouldn't put in that language I just said. Not because I'm afraid of what I just said. I support that one-hundred percent, but what I'm saying is you don't want to create another chilling effect on the whole situation.
I'm sort of playing devil's advocate because I know exactly what they're going to say.
We don't need to be...
They're going to say there is no law that says you can't go.
We cannot rule that meeting one-hundred percent. We've got to have, the only thing we have to do is set up the guidelines on what it should be. And if it doesn't turn out that way, then let the citizens complain about it.
I think, going back to what Charlie's saying, is that there is no law, but he, as our town attorney, advises us against it.
I absolutely agree.
And so if you're going to go against our town attorney's advice...
Of course. No, that's understandable.
That just sets us and the town up for litigation.
I think that going forward, not just us, not just after us and whatnot, we need to incorporate language that makes it very clear, very specific to what we can and can't do because someone else down the road is going to look at this and say, well, there isn't a law that says we can, but it's not a good idea.
Well, maybe...
And then again, we leave it up to interpretation. I'm going to follow what Charlie says, but...
Right. Maybe in our rules of procedure for the board, we could put that language in that piece.
Okay.
And I think Charlie, you know, to your point, you're being careful there. You don't want to have any exposure from someone, from our staff, electeds or not, being there, and it just opens up too many doors. I think you need to be real careful and mindful. There is no reason for a staff member to be there or an elected official to be there. It is supposed to be the applicant's meeting, not our meeting. We will find out the information, guaranteed, whatever may or may not have happened in that meeting.
This is the time for the applicant and the community to have an open discussion as to what the proposed project is and what its impact may or may not be, but just to show the community. And the community has a chance to have its input and say freely what it wants to say about the proposed development. It's a dialogue between the applicant and the community, and that's all it is. And we don't need to make this, we're making it a part of the ordinance and making it a part of the requirement that they do that, but we don't need to be regulating it to the nth degree. This is a dialogue time. This is not a, and as a matter of fact, as she's pointed out, it's not required by state statute. It is a discretionary thing, but most communities have it now for conditional because this gives the adjoining property owners and HOAs the ability to see a proposed project before the public hearing so that they can then meet at their own meetings, in their own neighborhood meetings, and discuss whether or not, what that impact is on them and what they want to do at the public hearing to present to the public hearing. But I think it ought to be an open, free air and dialogue and just not make it, it is going to be mandatory, but we don't need to make it such a requirement that there is any kind of chilling or they lose that dialogue opportunity. I think we just let it say, this is what you ought to be doing, and let them do it.
All right. Good. Any other comments?
Yes. What do you have to go?
Have we beat it up enough? Ann?
Leave it up to me to open up a long dialogue when we didn't need it.
It's the most I've heard you talk in a long time, so... Ann, you had a comment?
You have a couple more. So I was looking at the town of Waxahachie conditional zoning script process, and I know you don't have a slide on it, but it's in our packet, on page twenty-one of our packet. And it goes through the steps, like the pre-application meeting, the neighborhood meeting, the application submittal. And my question is, is this the right sequence? Does the, should the neighborhood meeting happen prior to the application process? And I think if I heard you right, Charlie, the neighborhood meeting is not required by state law, but this is a Waxahachie ordinance, so we, as a town, are requiring this as an additional step for our own process. And I'm just asking, is this the right sequence? Because if they have a neighborhood meeting and things change because they do collaborate, should they see what the next iteration is of that from the feedback that they may have seen from the neighborhood? Because it gives the, and I know, Charlie, you'll probably say that's what the public hearing is for, but if things change significantly, will the community have another opportunity to see what has been incorporated into maybe the next rendition or the iteration of the plan?
Yes, and that's the change that I talked about on that one slide.
Back up to that, I think you noted something, that there could be an additional meeting required at the request of the zoning administrator.
Right. When I was talking about this slide, we had made some changes.
And I know it's just this slide doesn't reflect that, so...
No, I know that, and that's, so we had talked about that, and we're going to require at least one meeting, and additional meetings will be at the discretion of the zoning administrator. So if we see major changes in this plan, yes, we will require a second meeting.
Is there any sort of criteria that you'll use to make that sort of decision?
Well, I think every zoning, conditional zoning is an, you know, individual site-specific plan, so it really depends on the plan and what changes they make.
And then is there any sort of timeline from, like, the neighborhood meeting to when they apply? Because, I mean, I know there is a, there was a neighborhood meeting for a potential project that could come in, and then how long goes on before next year or two years combined? Hey, we had our neighborhood meeting two years ago. Like, is there any sort of timeline or saying, well, if you don't start this process by X day, you have to start over?
Yes, and that's one of the other changes that I talked about on this slide, that it will be after the pre-application meeting and then no more than sixty days before application submittal.
And so if that sixty days expires, they have to start over?
They'll have to go back.
Okay. And then the other thing is on the signage requirements that we have?
Yes.
Black and white, or can we incorporate some of the town colors? Is black and white going to be visible enough from the street? Can we use any of the town pantones that we have out there?
We had a lot of discussion about that. We decided on black and white, just neutral. We did not want to use town colors. This is not a town meeting. It's the developer meeting, and we didn't really want to leave it up to the developers to come up with, you know, crazy colors, so we thought black and white.
Okay.
Cool. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else? All right, with that, no more questions. Guess I'll look to have a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
All right, motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Janet, for persevering all that, but it's good dialogue. Really is good dialogue. All right, we're going to skip through, there's nothing for old business. We have new business tonight, and this one is going to be from Ms. Lisa Thompson, Planning and Inspections Director. I say Mrs., so there you go.
Good evening. My name's Lisa Thompson. I'm here tonight to present a annexation petition. It's submitted by the applicant Shay Holmes, Carolina LLC. It's for annexation of approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-point-four-three acres. It's a total of four properties, and the subject property, properties are highlighted in yellow. To orient you to the site, you have Providence Road running north-south, Sunset Hill Road running east-west, and at that corner, not highlighted, is Carrington Square. That's the Aldi Shopping Center and the Bojangles. To the top left is a portion of the Lewis property. It's about a hundred-and-eighty-seven acres of the total four-hundred-and-fifty-seven acres. They will have to subdivide that off. And then the bottom left is the portion abutting Providence Road. There are three parcels in there that make up the rest of the two-hundred-and-twenty-seven acres. General Statute 168-31 is the process we follow for voluntary annexation. Today, we're going to run through steps one through three. We'll do a resolution of intent. We'll have the clerk certify that the application is sufficient, and then we're going to go ahead and call for a public hearing that will be held November fourteenth if this moves forward with a decision on November twenty-eighth. So I have the motions in front of you. I do want to mention that this is a pretty big deal, considering the development on Cutbertson Road, that's not within the town. The 2016 comp plan has a goal to consolidate and rationalize the town boundaries, not only for police protection, street maintenance, solid waste, all of our services, but also so the town can grow in a logical and orderly manner. So getting this in one of our donut holes is a big deal. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, again, this is a process. We'll go back to that again. But any questions for our presenter on this particular piece? All right, so the first part, I'm going to look for a motion to approve that resolution, ask the town clerk then to do her part, and then we'll go on to the second part. So can I have a motion for the first part, please?
Motion to approve, do you have a question? Oh. Motion to approve resolution RES two-zero-two-three-zero-two-six directing town clerk to investigate annexation petition one-eight-dash-two-three-three.
All right, that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous again. Town clerk?
I have investigated the petition and found that it was sufficient.
Good. Thank you for that. All right, second part of this is motion to approve the next resolution. Can I have that, please? This is for scheduling the public hearing.
Motion to approve resolution RES two-zero-two-three-zero-two-seven scheduling the public hearing for November fourteenth, 2023, at six-thirty PM in the Police Department Community Room.
And that would be in this room, so that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous all the way around. Lisa, thank you very much for that. There's a lot of information there.
Thank you.
All right, next up, town manager Jeff Wells. Are you doing this one or...
No, sir. Mayor, I'm going to turn this over to our town attorney.
Oh, good. That's right. That's Charlie's job tonight.
The board has gone there because he's been much earlier.
Charlie, yeah. You're talking a lot today.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board and the citizens of Waxahachie. I'm privileged to make a recommendation to you tonight. A little background, this is involved with the right-of-way needs for the Kensington Drive Street project. A little background, whenever state or...
A little background, whenever state or federal funds may be involved with a project, you have to follow the federal guidelines and the state guidelines on acquiring that right-of-way. First of all, you've got to get a certified appraisal. You cannot just go out and do a, get a real estate agent to do a windshield appraisal of the, of the right-of-way acquisitions. You have to get a before and after value appraisal. And before and after differs from just a property appraisal. Before and after is what is the value of the property immediately prior to the acquisition? And then what is the value of the property immediately after the acquisition? And what is that difference? That determines a before and after value, and that's required by a certified appraiser. In this case, we're dealing with the property at Forest Hill Church. The right-of-way agent that was a part of the group that the town had hired to acquire the right-of-way goes out and negotiates with the property owners. He also is under these same state and federal restrictions. He can exceed the appraised value by a certain percentage, but he cannot exceed that to settle. In this case, Forest Hill Church right-of-way needs are a, well, I'll tell you real quickly what the right-of-way needs are. There is a fee simple right-of-way to be acquired, a small amount, a small amount for a sidewalk easement. And I say small amount, it's a sidewalk easement. And then there is a, a public utility easement to be acquired and temporary construction easements along the way. Each one has a value. The before and after value, after taken into consideration by the appraiser, was that the, the difference or what would be just compensation would be $49,750 on the appraisal. The land before and after, the damage to land was $42,500. And then a part of that damage is, what are the damages, the remainder or the improvements? Well, there's no structural improvement damage, but there are a lot of vegetation, bushes, trees, et cetera, that will be acquired and necessary to acquire. So that was worth $7,250 by the appraiser. And I want you to remember this, appraisals are nothing more than the opinion of the author. It's not a science. It is an art. Now, they are trained and if we go to court, I'm going to say how great he is. And I think that this appraiser did a fantastic job, but the guidelines restrict our right-of-way agent. He could not exceed $64,750 to try and settle it. That was his maximum that he could go. The attorney who represents Forest Hill, who is from Charlotte and a well-known condemnation lawyer in Charlotte, and usually goes for the juggler for the max, but in this case, he said that if you could just get to $75,000, they would settle it. Well, Mr. Yeagley, our right-of-way agent, being at his limit, could not exceed that. There's $11,000 difference between his, his maximum and the amount that they would sell for. So he turned it back over to the town for condemnation, but he turned it over with his report. And then his report indicated that they would probably settle for $75,000. Under the guidelines, if an attorney gets involved for the town and the condemnation process begins, the attorney can exceed those limitations on the right-of-way agent. When I saw what where we were, 11,000 difference, I immediately called the attorney and I discussed it with him, and he assured me that they, that they will settle for $75,000. His evidence would tend to show that the damage was $105,000. So there's a difference between the 49,750 and 105,000. Jurys are not going to look with sympathy on a town. They're going to look at sympathy on a church. So remember this, once you, when you file a condemnation, title passes to that property you're acquiring upon the filing of the complaint declaration taken and the deposit in your estimated just compensation. Title that real estate passes to the town right then. It's, it's a quick take process. Then you're going to spend a year and a half, two years as civil litigation to determine that ultimately could lead to a jury trial on what the jury would think to be the just compensation that this property owner is entitled to. That could be anywhere from a year to a year and a half process with different legal functions going on in the, in the interim, including a mandatory mediation. And a mediation hearing could go three, four hours. It could either be settled or it could be impasse. But there's a potential of a year, a year and a half's commitment by the town to acquire this property. You will have deposited $49,750. So I discussed it with him. He said that they would definitely accept seven, uh, $75,000, which is unusual because the reputation of this attorney, and I've dealt with him before in other condemnations for other communities, he's pretty good. And, and more than likely, you will see a jury verdict that you're not satisfied with. So I told Jeff, I said, let's see if we can get the board to accept acquisition by a right-of-way deed in lieu of condemnation and pay $75,000 for that property, which it may very well be worth, because remember I said earlier that appraisal is nothing more than the opinion of the author. Now, I'm not a certified appraiser, so I'm not going to attack his appraisal. The lawyer on the other side is saying the, the comps used by our appraiser are pretty good. They're fairly decent. They, they tend to using their same comps with their real estate people. But he said the adjustment of the individual appraiser seems to be a little out of whack. He's a little low, he said. His, his adjustments were too, too, too strong. Whether that's true or not, it doesn't matter because he can get that into evidence. So nevertheless, so what I'm saying is, if I'm recommending tonight that you would settle this, right now, you would avoid my attorney's fees over the next year and a half. You would avoid filing fees. You would avoid going to mediation and/or going to a jury, and you would find out that you'd have to now pay 85, $90,000 for this. But you've also got legal fees and also, remember one more thing, there is a interest requirement that if the amount that you deposited and the amount that is awarded by a jury, that difference carries 6% a year interest. Well, 10 years ago, 6% interest didn't seem so bad. Right now, that's a whole lot of money that would be added to the jury award. Bottom line is, you could probably save by doing this right now, your staff time dealing with this, my attorney's fees, your appraiser's expert witness fees. He would have to be prepped for trial. He'd have to go sit in trial. It could be as long as a day or a day and a half, his fees. All those fees would go away if you would settle for $75,000. So it would be, my recommendation and I think staff joins in on, on their motion that has been prepared by a memo from the staff, seeking a motion to approve the acquisition of Forest Hill Church property adjacent to Kensington Drive by right-of-way deed, including easements in the amount of $75,000 in lieu of condemnation. And that I think would be the motion that we would seek tonight.
Short story, this is a good business decision.
Oh, it's, it's, when I saw that, I said, we're going to take that right quick. Cause I, I literally have been involved with probably three or 400 condemnations over my career and take it. Take it. It's, you'll save money.
And it's a good partner in our community, too.
Absolutely.
That's the bigger part of it as well. This project is going to relieve some of the congestion that was created by the original design and give a little bit relief on the Kensington 16 intersection there.
Correct.
So anyway, any questions? We've beat up another one pretty good, but I think that's good dialogue, Charlie, and thanks for the education.
Well, I think that the public needs to understand too what it is that you're voting on here. And so I've got motor mouth again.
Commissioner Simpson?
Jeff, could you maybe explain to the public who may not be aware, but we have a project planned in the capital improvement plan to start like in 2025? Could you maybe explain what that would be for this particular piece of road?
Yes, I'll, I'll be happy to, Anne. And I'll also add before that, that when Charlie approached me with this, it took all of about two or three seconds to identify that this is a wise thing to do. So it comes with the manager recommendation as well. But the, the project that this is making the way for is an intersection improvement at Kensington Drive and NC 16. So it will add additional turn lane for additional queuing to be able to turn onto NC 16, as well as an additional sidewalk along the north side of Kensington Drive that'll go back to, I believe it's Connell's Point Road. Is that correct? Yes. So that is, is what this project will, will pave the way for. And so the town has a capital improvement budget. Our share of this project is over $1.3 million, and it's also administered by the CRTPO. And we will hopefully go into construction on that project within the next couple of years. Of course, have to settle these matters first before we can move in that direction.
And so just sort of, so everyone understands and for the people watching is that we need to acquire that land in order to make the expanded lanes. And right now, our choice is either we condemn this land and take it, and it would cost more through litigation, time, energy, effort and money than what we can settle this for at $75,000.
That's correct. It saves us time and money. There's, it's no question that it is a, a good business decision and beneficial for us to do this while the opportunity is there.
Yeah, cause it sounds like the way Charlie described it, that the time and energy and the, the cost that we would burden to do it through a condemnation would be a lot more than $75,000.
That's correct. And the other thing to be reminded about it is that this is a, a project where it is the 80/20, and so we will get reimbursed for 80% of that cost.
Again, to the comment I made earlier, this is because of a good relationship with one of our property owners in town. They're a good community partner, and this is a win-win for everybody. All right. So who wants to wiggle that motion and remove?
Motion to approve acquisition of Forest Hills Church property adjacent to Kensington Drive by right-of-way deed, including easements in the amount of $75,000 in lieu of condemnation.
All right. That motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir? Did you, did you have a question, Jason?
No.
No problem. All right. That motion is passed then. Unanimous. Thank you very much.
This gets me, but it's brother my clown win.
All right. Now, Jeff, you get to, you get to get up there again. This is on the adoption of a resolution to exchange some property owned by the town. So Jeff, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, again. The town owns property at 8203 Waxaw Highway. It historically has served as the town compost site and for general storage. The town has relocated its compost site to town property behind the Harris Teeter on Kensington Drive, making 8203 Waxaw Highway property expendable. So Waxaw Highway Devco LLC has interest in the town property. They own property at 7716 Waxaw Highway, just a little over a half mile away from our 8203 Waxaw Highway. So you see here on the map, our former compost site here on the western side. So to give yourself some orientation, right across the street is Main Street Station. And of course, you see the CSX rail right to the north of there, just about a little over a half a mile, over 3,000 feet to the east is the subject property. It is along Highway 75, and it goes all the way back to the CSX tract rail right-of-way. So municipalities are authorized by General Statute 168-271 to exchange property for fair consideration. Waxaw Highway Devco LLC will pay an additional consideration in the amount of $289,096.90 to exchange the property. And so that is what your staff is recommending. And you see the proposed motion there. As I mentioned before, our entire compost operation is moving up to a more, more amenable site for our needs now up in the northern side of town behind Harris Teeter, because that's where most of our leaves are. And so that will greatly benefit the public services staff and be more efficient with that operation that we'll be starting again in just a little, a little over a week. And that site, that site is ready. So you see the motion there, and I will certainly be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This, this is again, part of a bigger vision for one. Waxaw Highway Devco has also acquired or is in position to acquire the old Waxaw Museum, Museum of the Waxaws site. This acquisition by them on that portion of it basically will save the museum and keep it operational, which is a good, good thing to do. This particular property, our old 8203, gives them the ability to complete a, a bigger project and again, contribute more to the Museum of the Waxaws as far as the benefit and keeping them alive. So I think that's a bigger vision where they started from. It just happened that, that purchaser and that owner has, has that other property to the east over there.
Yes, that's correct. That's a great point.
Anne?
Are we able to discuss our goals for this property exchange and why we're exchanging it?
That's up to you.
Well, not necessarily, because what I'm saying that it's not able to discuss, but this is a placeholder for us for property later, if there's any use. It happens to be the current alignment study that's been done by DOT, so it'll give us a position in that. But the bigger picture again here is to reorganize our leaf collection operation to a more efficient site in the locations where we collect the leaves. This just happened to be part of the boot, boot being the consideration.
But the property that we're acquiring can help us secure more of the parkway?
If it stays there.
Yes. The feasibility study shows it to be there, and so it certainly will help and would not hurt towards the goal.
Any other thoughts and comments? All right. Looking for a motion. All rush up to the front.
Thank you. Motion to adopt resolution RES 2023025 to exchange property owned by the town of Waxaw for property owned by Waxaw Highway Devco LLC, including an additional payment by the Waxaw Highway Devco LLC to the town in the amount of $288,096.90. And authorize the town manager to execute all documents and complete the transaction.
Good. All right. That motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around unanimous. Good work on that. By luck, we have a more effective operation overall. Appreciate that. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Next up, Mr. Kelly, I think you're back up to talk to us about some more speed cushions.
More speed cushions, yes. So tonight, two actions will be requested of you. One for Coleroy Road. That should look familiar because we've already approved as a board two speed cushions on the southern end of Coleroy. The request tonight will be for two on the northern end, approximately quarter to a half mile north of the previously approved location. The other location is Hudson Mill Drive, so we'll dive into that. But first off, just a general overview, this is based on Waxaw's traffic calming policy, and that determines the eligibility for the installation of various traffic calming devices. In this case, speed cushions are recommended. They are the four-inch vertical deflections used to reduce vehicular speed, and they additionally include the cutouts to allow for those emergency vehicles to pass without reducing speed. So phase one of the process for both Coleroy and Hudson Mill. Again, for Coleroy, the previous study was conducted on the southern section of Coleroy Road near Soaring Eagle. That was approved back in September as a part of September's BOC. The property owner additionally reached out to us again for the northern piece of Coleroy Road, so we performed a study on that near Manorwick Farms Drive. This traffic evaluation study was completed on Coleroy Road near Manorwick over a 72-hour period. The analyzed locations met the criterion in accordance with the town's traffic calming policy. Similar steps for Hudson Mill Drive near Lily Pond Circle. This was an additional request from a separate property owner. They submitted the request, asking the town to perform a traffic evaluation on Hudson Mill near Lily Pond Circle. This study was conducted on Hudson Mill Drive near Lily Pond Circle over the 72-hour minimum period, and that condition as well met the minimum criterion in accordance with the town's traffic calming policy. So phase two of the process, petition documents were sent to the property owner to obtain signatures of support. These petition documents are provided within your agenda packets this evening. The traffic calming for- The traffic calming for petitions for both Coleroy and Hudson Mill met the minimum 70% of properties within the area signing in favor of the petition for the installation of the speed cushions. Town staff for both Coleroy and Hudson Mill reviewed signatures for accuracy and confirmed that the minimum 70% was achieved for both locations. The difference is, Coleroy Road, we received a letter of support from the Kirton HOA, whereas Hudson Mill was from the Millbridge HOA. So next steps, town staff recommends the installation of four speed cushions. These locations are specified below. So on Coleroy, two on the northern section, one of which will be located approximately at mid-block on Coleroy between Gray Byram Road and Mannerwick Farms Drive, and the second being approximately mid-block on Coleroy between Mannerwick Farms and Whitlock Hill Road. Two more on Hudson Mill Drive, one of which will be located at approximately 175 feet west of Lily Pond Circle, and the other will be located at mid-block on Hudson Mill Drive between Lily Pond Circle and Easley Street. Typical construction cost is estimated between $2,500 to $3,000 per speed cushion. That price is pending, so an approximately $12,000 cost for these four speed cushions is estimated. Upon Waxaw BOC authorization of expenditures, contract for the speed cushion installation will be issued. Note that prior to any start of construction, impacted HOAs and adjacent residents will be notified. So with that, we're looking for any questions that you may have, along with two requested actions.
All right, any questions? We talked about this last time before, so any questions on it? All right, I'm looking for two motions. Somebody give me the first one.
Motion to approve the installation of two additional speed cushions along Coleroy Road as presented.
All right, that motion's up. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Second motion, please.
Motion to approve the installation of two speed cushions along Hudson Mill Drive as presented.
All right, that motion is also up. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous again. Thank you. Appreciate that, and I'm sure the residents all appreciate that as well, so.
They absolutely do.
All right, thank you. Thank you, James. All right, Ms. Dina is up tonight. She's looking for approval of a partnership agreement. This goes back to, oh yeah, a process on how we accept donations. Dina?
Good evening. I am here tonight to have exciting news about our new Smile Trailer. I wanted to give some background of that partnership. Autism Strong Foundation understands and the understanding of raising, raising a child with autism is very expensive. It has many family struggles that is hard for the necessary treatment and therapy for equipment as well. Alongside families to provide those financial assistance that helps them pay for expenses, which is significant, makes a significant difference to a child's lives with autism and their families. Autism Strong is a valuable resource for our families in the resident rural area of Greater Charlotte and the region. That includes us. The financial challenges for raising a child with autism is that it is a challenge. I wanted to thank Ms. Stephanie. She's in our audience. Would you please stand up for me? She is the executive director for Autism Strong, and...
Come on up, Stephanie. Come on up to the podium.
She has been a great partner with us, and this means a lot. And I really appreciate their partnership to make this happen for us, for Waxaw. I also wanted to thank Ms. Robin. She's been our lead from our department to make this happen as well. So about nine months ago, we came, came to the team and said that we can do more. And with that strong partnership, we were able to. And that's what we're going to talk to you about tonight. What Smile means. Sensory mindfulness, inclusion, learning, and engaging. Why are we doing this? Our community is focused on, this, a community focused on inclusion. This inclusion trailer will provide a safe haven, a refuge, with our sensory needs for our Town of Waxaw at events and programs. This environment will be a safe haven for everyone who needs it. What's the trailer about? The interior and exterior. It's going to look very similar to our Hero trailer, which y'all know is a great success for Waxaw. The trailer will be decked out with soundproofing, which is a great need for our cognitive disabilities. Everything we need in there to meet their needs. And also, we'll have, it would, it's self-efficient. So we'll have AC and heat, so we can have it year-round. All the ADA requirements and beyond are in this trailer. Cool things inside the trailer. So when we came, to Stephanie, the, basically, we came with a project board of all the cool things that we would love to see in the trailer, which is listed out on the side. The partnership with Autism Strong is $30,000 donation to the town. That partnership for the next 10 years. And again, a wonderful way for us to work together to bring this great need for our citizens. So our motion tonight is for to give authorization to the town manager to approve and for y'all to approve and for town manager to execute the agreement.
All right, any questions on this? It's a, it's a great effort to put out there. And also, just a small part of it, obviously, will provide a safe and quiet space for those families to be able to relax if they are attending some of our town events. We have a space for them to go, because as you know, some events will be quite noisy for some of, some of the people who suffer with this. And this gives them a place to calm down. Has trained personnel there at every one of our events. It's, it's a pretty good thing to do. Any other questions with our staff? So this is a process, again, on our ability to accept this donation. So if there are no further questions, Ms. Dina and I, so you lighten up there.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Oh, you ready or ready? Between the two of you? Oh my goodness. All right, so with that said, if there's no further questions, whatever, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the agreement.
I want you to read the motion.
Read the motion then.
Where's the motion?
It's on your paper. Sorry.
Well, this motion? Oh, okay. That's, I was looking at the... I make the motion to approve the partnership agreement and accept the donation in the amount of $30,000 to the Town of Waxaw for the startup costs for the mobile Smile Trailer and to authorize the town manager to execute the agreement.
All right, now we have a motion.
I was looking at the screen.
Thank you for that. All right, that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous again. Thank you very much, and thank you for helping us through this whole process. And Dina, thank you. All right, Assistant Town Manager and Town Engineer, Mr. Matt Hubert's up to tell us about some of the CARPO DA funds.
Yes, thank you. That was a great opportunity right there to follow up. I really love that option. So tonight, I want to bring forward two potential applications that the, our staff has presented and are proposing to bring forward to CRTPO's fall call for funding of projects. So just some background. The CRTPO is accepting grant applications through the end of the month. The engineering department has identified two separate projects in different funding buckets to bring forward for that request. One is for Kensington Road, and the other is for the Helms Road extension as candidate projects. Both projects will, will either reduce traffic congestion and/or increase pedestrian safety for users of the town network. These projects were sometimes unsolicited asked for at the, at the Town CIP 10 as to what was the town doing in both of these regards. And so that was a good, something positive for me to be able to relate back to the public in that engagement, and I think proves the value that we are bringing forth. So the grant is a matching grant. Town of Waxaw would be providing two separate potential cost shares, 30% for the Kensington Sidewalk Project and 20% for the Helms Road Extension Project. Go into a little bit more detail on those. So the Kensington Road Project is in the, is in the multi-use bucket for funding, not specifically traffic improvements. But it is proposed to add a 10-foot wide multi-use path along with a pedestrian bridge and boardwalk to cross the creek in that, in that location. The path will be proposed on the north side of Kensington Road, and it will provide connectivity from Waxaw Marvin Road to the Kirton Commercial Center at NC 1600. Proud of its road. There are currently already existing RRFBs for the limited sidewalk network that is there to assist in, in safe crossing of those facilities. This also does offer a potential for future trailhead, one our town-owned parcel that is, that is a portion of this property, though that is not specifically included in this request. So here's the overview. Kensington Road, and then here is, it would begin at Morehouse at the beginning of Quellin, in this location in the southwestern portion, and then go the north side of Kensington Road across the bridge. And this is where the Truss Bridge will come in. We wouldn't have pedestrians trying to stay on that bridge. It's not wide enough. It's too expensive to change the bridge, so we're just going to propose a pedestrian bridge, separate facility. Then it ties back into the, to the road, the edge of the pavement. There will be an eight-foot planter strip and a 10-foot concrete multi-use path that will terminate at Connell's Point, tying into the current project for Kensington Road where the sidewalk is proposed to be completed prior to this project coming online. And so this is a little bit more detail of the preliminary plan. It's about a 20% design completion for, for the purposes of seeking this funding and understanding what the overall cost would be. It's a little difficult to see in this, in this format, but again, 10-foot wide sidewalk with an eight-foot planter strip to keep some separation from the traffic and the users. And then as it makes the turn, here is the, a little bit of the detail on the Truss Bridge, where you'll come off away from the, from the traffic bridge and be able to walk across the creek and then join back to the sidewalk along the roadside. And finally, the final curve where it terminates at Connell's Point, where again, we have a proposed sidewalk already funded and hope for construction in 2025. If we get more right-of-way as fast as Charlie can get it for us. So this is a basic rundown of the costs and the proposed cost share. This comes from the application we're submitting. So it is recommended that we try and perform each task, the design, engineering, right-of-way, and construction on a two-year cycle. And so that's what we've done here. The proposed estimates from our consultant on the design and construction has $300,000 in design fees, $21,000 and some change on right-of-way, very minimum right-of-way. Some of this property is owned by the town, and that's beneficial to the scoring and the cost of the project. And then 2.3 million in construction. When you do a project estimate with CRTPO, knowing that it's this many years out and that it's not fully designed, there is a significant contingency that they, that they add on. And in addition to that, we've learned in years past that inflation often exceeds that contingency. So there are additional estimates added to the original cost to get a submitted total for what that project should be by the time it's completed. When we put all those numbers together, it's over a $4 million project. In order to score most competitively, we're proposing a 30%, match. Part of this is because if the project is more than $3.1 million, that exceeds the threshold of the limit per project request. And so we have to buy a little bit of that cost down and get under that threshold. And also, we'll be getting more criteria points from the scoring system to compete against other projects from other municipalities that are looking for funding from the same bucket. So the bottom line on this project is, is the overall commitment from the town of a 30% match, totaling 1.2 and some change, a million dollars, to fund this if we were approved in the application. And so again, the request is from the board to, to agree to commit to this and submit the application in good faith that if we were selected, that they, that we would indeed pay our fair share and bring this project to completion. Any questions on Kensington?
Question for Charlie again, sorry. I live in Quellin. Do I need to recuse myself being at this project as in essence benefiting Quellin?
I'm sorry, you say you live there.
Yes, sir.
No, that's not going to cause a conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment in there along the way with this thing. Each year, there are funds available from the feds and the state, and some of that gets put in what's called a discretionary bucket. And it's basically some extra money that can be distributed throughout the region. As many of you know, I chair CARPO, which is the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. I have 26 other mayors that are on that board with me. As the chair of that, I have to be impartial and fair, and I have to help manage the process. The other hat that I wear with that as well is the hat of Mayor of the Town of Waxaw. And it is certainly going to be incumbent on me and something that I desire to have our board and approve something like this, to ask CARPO to be part of this submittal process. So again, this is a submittal, as Matt was saying there. They go through a whole process again. There we go again, that process word. And they go through and they score projects throughout the region. So it's Iredale, Mecklenburg, and parts of Union County is my board's region. And so we will compete with others in the region for these discretionary funds. It's been our experience in the past, and certainly something that I've observed in both my roles, both as mayor and as chairman, the local match percentage is a big consideration. We're in such great financial shape that we can afford to do this and probably get a good chance of being considered for this, this project. And so I think, again, this is something that will help the community. I have to, you know, again, be very cognizant of my other partners, my other 26 other mayor partners in that organization. But again, us being prepared is going to give us some additional leverage that some other communities may not have the ability to do as much of a local match. And some of the DA funds before, people had it in their mind, well, it's 10%, you know. Well, 10% might have been the requested match, but we had other municipalities come in and say, I'll give 25%, and they got the grant. They got the money, the discretionary fund. So having us be in the position that we are certainly is some more leverage and certainly hope that we can pull this off. It would be part of that transportation alignment, whether pedestrian or not, that is a little bit in concert, it's a block away, but a little bit in concert with what we talked about earlier on the acquisition of the real estate in front of the Forest Hills Church. So it's not too far from, basically one block, but one block in there. So again, it enhances more of our ability to move people throughout our community, not necessarily on the roadways. Appreciate that. Correct. And with that, so any other comments, thoughts, questions for our presenter? That was a sneeze. Okay. It's good. You weren't going to whisper over there. All right. All right, so if there's no questions on that, again, this is an ask to have us submit the application, and hopefully that we score well. So... So can I have a motion, please?
I'll go ahead and, and bring the, help combine the motions.
Oh, you got more? Yep. Where are we at there?
So I'm going to move forward with the, with the highway project.
Ah, two of them.
And then we can do them both at the same time.
Sorry about that, I saw the one motion.
Sure. And so this one is, is rather timely as well when we consider what's going on with CSX next week. This is the, the highway project funding request and we're calling it the Helms Road Extension roadway and pedestrian improvements. It essentially is the Waxahaw Parkway West because of, of the requirement that, that roads be federally, on a federal list of, of streets. The Parkway is not on that list in the west, but the Helms Road is. And so this is a kind of a just nomenclature item to, to, to avoid confusion. It is a, a very high priority project for the town. It's one of our highest in our master transportation plan is this extension. And ultimately what this would do is tie in the, the proposed or the funded Tory Path Helms Road grade separated crossing to Waxahaw Parkway and ultimately to NC 16 and the widening of Providence Road. That's, that's also funded and, and those are due to be completed in, in, in 2027 through 2030. And so we are again trying to get this vital link completed so that that route provides a, a continuous bypass and helps provide a, a means of, of crossing the railroad tracks and 75 without having to go to grade separated crossings that can be impeded by the train whether it's passing through or stopping as it's, as it tends to do. So again, this will reduce traffic congestion and increase both vehicular and pedestrian safer.
Safety.
Sorry. So this is the, the general plan overview. Again, pushing the wrong button and that's what happens. So this is where the roundabout at, at, at Helms and Waxahaw Marvin Road is, is proposed to be completed over around 2027. For these on this screen, that's where it would begin on the, on the western terminus. And then it's just, the, the new alignment is this, is this link right here, a little S curve going to the terminus, the current terminus of Waxahaw Parkway West through Harrison Park. And then we would be full depth reclaiming the existing pavement section of Waxahaw Parkway because it's, it's been out there for some time and it wasn't necessarily designed and constructed to serve the type of traffic that we're proposing to put on it. And so ultimately this would be so that we don't have to come back in, in some near term and do repairs on that road. It can be ready for, for all that traffic loading from day one, once it's open and, and ideally make it possible to, to be maintained by NC DOT and not a town street because of the nature of the, of the roadway. So again, this is just a, a zoom in of, of the design. It's about a twenty percent design for, for estimating and overview purposes. We are proposing sidewalk on one side of the road and a ten-foot multi-use path on the other side of the road. I believe the multi-use path is on the south of, of the proposal line. But again, offering ability for, for not just pedestrians, but also cyclists and, and whatever mode of transportation to be able to use this facility without being on the road where it's, it's generally, if you're not comfortable doing it, you're not going to use the, the road, the road facility. And then this is the, where it finally, the curve terminates into, into the current alignment of Waxahaw Parkway West at, at the back of, of Harrison Park. And then this is the, the center section of the current roadway showing again some of the sidewalk improvements. And, and this portion would be again, full depth reclaimed so that we get new pavement structure in place at the same time. Here's where it starts to begin to, to straighten out behind the Lowe's, I'm not sorry, that Lowe's, Food Lion and then Dollar General. And then finally where it terminates and, and we would not go all the way to the intersection of Providence Road. We would just be going to where the widening of, of Providence Road project is already scoped to, to add some laneage and, and replace pavement. I think it goes about 400 feet. So this is right in line with the, with the family Dollar, more or less, is where the DOT project will pick it up and take it over. And, and that does result in significant savings in the overall project. And these are anticipated, hopefully be done at, at about the same time. So perhaps there can be some, some economies of scale as there, there as well. So this is a look at the budget request numbers here, something different from, from Kensington's submittal and, and this is for a couple of reasons. One, we are not proposing to request the design costs as a part of this project. There are two reasons for that. One, we will score better if we, if we eliminate that phase because we're asking for less money and, and, and less time through CRTPO administration. And what that does is it allows us to not have to wait. Ideally this, if this gets approved, it'll get approved in January or February. And then we have to wait for the supplemental agreement, the funding become available and then the authorization. Then we have to get a RFP or an RFQ for the design firm. If, if we do, if we do not submit for that phase, we can go right into design once we know we're awarded and speed up that process. So we're not slowing down and waiting to, to initiate the design engineering. We can go right into right-of-way once it's funded in fiscal year 26. And then assuming we can get that within the two-year, we'll go to construction in 28. And again, hopefully have that in place by the time the roundabout and the widening are completed and we can have a nice new bypass completely within our, our own making. So again, with the, with the initial estimate of numbers, contingencies, inflation and the project totals, the overall project cost is estimated at 8.8 million dollars. Our local match percentage I'm keeping to the bare minimum because it is quite a costly project and it can, these costs can potentially increase. So our match, if, if the match is higher than our, and the costs increase, our, our final layout is also going to be higher. I think this project really stands out on its own merits. It doesn't score well when, when we consider a new roadway alignment, just in the way that, that these projects are scored. When we talk about congestion, we have to show, hey, how are we relieving congestion? If this road doesn't have any traffic, it's difficult to make that argument. We're comparing it to the conditions at 16 and 75. I think both DOT and, and the CRTPO in general know how important this project is to the region and not just the town. And so I do anticipate that this will score well, even if we are only matching at twenty percent. The logic of, of putting this in place with the roundabout and the widening further, further I think the, the importance and the timeliness to have this project approved in, in this cycle. Ultimately, the bottom line when we consider the local match at twenty percent is 1.7 million and then our estimated design fees at 750,000. Put the total match to the town, or total outlay to the town at, at two and a half million dollars, which again is well below what this cost for the project would be if we undertook it on our own. Any questions on the Helms Road Extension?
Yes, yeah.
I have a, a question and I know Chief Sharp is here from the fire department and I know he is mentioned in the past, but having this connection would be so important in terms of fire response time. Does that play any factor in the decision-making as this goes up to CRPTO, like, like public safety?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. There is a category and I've, I've requested letters from both PD and fire to illustrate how important it is to have this connection made when we consider the impacts that, that congestion and/or trains at the at-grade crossings will have. And our fire station is on Waxahaw Parkway West, but it can't go anywhere west. That is a, that is a major, major factor that, that should be considered and, and one of the reasons we've, we found it so prior, such priority on our own.
Yes, Chief, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you said having this would reduce your response time to Millbridge by two minutes. And ti- you know, time is muscle or memory if you're having a stroke or heart attack. So, okay.
And that's not exclusive to just fire too. That would also benefit our police department response as well as EMS response too.
We all have been working on this for the last four years to try to get this thing done to again, improve the safety conditions within our town, the access, certainly working on the east side as well with the new development that could happen over there. Part of that roadway on the east side is already in and we just need a little bit more extension. And both of these are going to benefit our ability to serve our public, especially from a safety standpoint with fire and PD. So Jeff?
And of course, as you see, these are large costs. What you will see at your upcoming two-by-two would be a, a proposed budget amendment that would move this money to our capital reserve. So regardless of whether we get this award this time, it would be there for the next time around if we have to attempt again on one or both of these. And something else to be mindful of, when we were going through our state lobbying process this year and working with, with Deborah, this project Waxahaw Parkway West or Helms Road Extension was our top priority. It was discussed a lot through those halls and in the state legislature. So the first question that was asked quite a bit is this project on the STIP or the State Transportation Improvement Program? And the answer was no. So it really was a non-starter. So my read on the situation was is that we had people that were willing to help, but their hands were tied because of their process and how they can't award those appropriations through that particular pot of money. So I have confidence that if we get this as a DA project and it gets on the STIP, there will be a good opportunity to get a good portion of this paid for with assistance from the state. That will remain, I hope, as we go through the process this next time, that it be our top priority. And I really do feel confident that if we can answer yes to that question, we can see a, a positive outcome where we may not have to put up as much money, if any.
It's all part of a longer range vision, longer planning. It isn't just tomorrow, what happens next. Four years we've been working on this stuff and now we're at that jumping off point to at least get it in position to be able to accept anything that may be granted to us. And we should also, we've also talked about long before, if we had to put this in, could we and would we? And it's, as if you see now on there, it's a, that one portion of Helms is looking at seven mil to put that in. So that's a, that's a bunch of money, but any offsets that would certainly be appreciated, to say the least.
Absolutely.
Anyway, any thoughts? So I wanted to jump the gun because I was so excited about that before. So these are great projects that should be considered and again, it's, it's an ask by us. So unless there's any further questions, any more, did I miss a third one? No, that's it. All right. So I am going to then look for a motion to direct staff to move these into the submittal position. So can I have a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution RES 2023 028 endorsing town's 2023 CRTPO DA funds applications for Helms Road Extension and Kensington Multi-Use Path Projects.
All right. It's a good motion. Thank you, Pedro. All right, that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous all the way around. Thank you, Matt. Thanks for the long explanation.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, quickly through the town leadership reports. Start out with Mr. Wells again.
Thank you, Mayor. Three quick things. Would, would like to let the public know that the Downtown Waxahaw Association received two 50-50 mansion grants recently. The DWA received $1,250 to support the town's first Friday efforts, $3,000 for a mural downtown. So that's exciting. So the DWA will be working on those opportunities as we move forward. I want to remind the board that tomorrow night is session nine of Waxahaw 101. It is the session on VOC and advisory boards. So I'll be giving that short presentation, roughly 30 minutes. Of course, any board member that is there can certainly chime in on that as well. And then we will move into our mock rezoning exercise where the participants in the class will get the opportunity to be the board and look at a scenario and get an understanding of what it's like to be up there at the dais and do the work of the town. So we're real excited about that. The quorum notice has been issued, so we are good to go, we are good to go there. And just on a, a, a personal note, it's really great to see everybody here that is wearing, wearing pink. It's a personal thing to me. It's affected me in the past, present, future. And so it's just always real good to, to see that. There's a lot of people out there that are affected and we just do what we can to, to help fight that cause. The Women's Club does a great thing. They just did this past Saturday and I was out of town, but folks there were able to save a couple of pink pumpkins for me. And so I got my pink pumpkins and got those out of the stoop. So, you know, it's obviously, there's a lot of causes, causes out there, but just appreciate everybody's support and breast cancer awareness. Thank you.
All right, next up, Chief Wilson. Come back.
All right. So Saturday, October 21st, we assisted with an escort from Provisions to Billy Graham Ministries. Provisions have been collecting money for a while and once that money was collected, they had to get it to Billy Graham. And so our officers were able to assist with getting them there. There were quite a bit of motorcycles that went. I think, Mayor, you were one of those motorcycles. So we, we appreciate the support and thank you for coming up to that. Officer Vic Montalvo, Kevin Gasser and Michael Scarphone, they've been collecting money for a while for a very worthy cause for Special Olympics again this year. They've done it every year. This year's been really tough. You know, there are SROs in Waxahaw Elementary and Kensington Elementary. So really the only time they've been able to collect money is teacher workdays, downtime. So they've, they've really done a lot. They're up to $8,000 now. We're still, we're selling the hats and shirts here at the police department as well as their next event will be at Dunkin' Donuts at Providence Road and Newtown Road on November So like I said, we're very fortunate to have Vic, Kevin and Michael all doing this for us and doing this for Special Olympics. For this coming week, we've got six officers working. That'll be off-duty officers to come in and try to take care of some of that traffic congestion that we're going to see do the CSX River crossing. We know the last time we had that repaving done, that was on a Saturday and it was, it was pretty packed for a Saturday. So this is school days, Monday through Thursday at least, with possibly Friday as well. So we're taking it very serious and we're going to do everything we can to get traffic through safely. So we hope people do observe the alternate routes and so they can get around the town. And we'll have extra officers just in case. We'll be putting extra officers on the south side and the north side to take calls for service in case we have calls that require two officers. We'll have those officers over there ready to go. That's it.
All right. I want to, I want to say thanks to the PD as well for providing that assistance for the ride for Provisions. It was nice to have that. Commissioner Morey and I rode together through that whole thing.
I missed you in the picture.
You can't miss him.
So, and I'm going to tell you, we've, we've done a lot in the downtown area in the last couple of months. We've really bonded with the business owners and that's been a real blessing for us. So now we actually know what's going on, you know, down So now we actually know what's going on, you know, downtown in the businesses and get the invites. So it's been really great.
It's a good working relationship, as we've noticed in this case specifically with the ownership of Provisions, of Richardson's. They've been very much involved in our community and wanted to make this effort. When we got up to Billy Graham up there, there must have been early morning, we were there probably 10 o'clock early morning, there was already probably 2,000 motorcycles in that parking lot and hundreds more coming in. It was huge. So it was a great effort, very successful. In case people don't know what it was, what they call it, boxes for bikers?
Boxes and boxes.
Yeah.
And the idea was to get boxes filled with toys and to be able to bring them up to the Billy Graham Library in support of Samaritan's Purse. I've worked with them before. They're a great organization. Worked with them during a hurricane out in Jacksonville, North Carolina, in support of the Marine Corps Base there. Imagine being, you know, deployed and having to go through that through a hurricane. But it was a great event. There were a lot of motorcycles there. I'm a big fan of that.
Yeah, it's a great event, and it didn't always have to. It's basically shoebox size, and so you'd be surprised how much money you can spend on filling a shoebox because not only with toys, but with toiletries. And again, these are going out to some kids either regionally or in another country that don't have simple things such as toothpaste or deodorant or anything like that. So it was a good event, a lot of support. I think they filled at least one 53-footer with these shoeboxes, size things, full, completely full. A lot of boxes, thousands. So it was a great event, and thanks for riding with me. Pedro always protects my flank on one side. He always rides one side of me, so that's a good thing. So I appreciate that. But thank you again to all the guys that were out there, too. It was a great show. The blue lights were blinking. Jason, I know you really want some of those blinky blue lights, but they were blinking all up and down, and the handoff was at 84. And everybody on the road pulled completely aside. It was really an awesome sight to see that happen in the cooperation of our PD. So thank the guys for us again, most definitely. Thank you. All right, we'll drop down to Ms. Lisa again. Your report, Ms. Ashley, is under the weather, so we'll skip to Ms. Lisa.
Thank you. Good evening. Fright Night is happening downtown this Saturday, October 28th. There's lots going on downtown. Our Historic Preservation Commission is co-hosting what they call Waxahaw After Dark. It's a walking tour with stops at several locations throughout downtown with ghostly past. Online tickets are sold out. There is a very limited number of tickets available for walk-ups. They're co-hosting that with the Downtown Waxahaw Association. We are finalizing the comp plan, comprehensive plan. We're calling it Waxahaw 2040. We're very proud, as you know, we've done that in-house over the last year. Just a reminder, the public hearing for that is coming up November 14th. Planning Board had their meeting last week. Mr. Daniel Ferris will continue as our chairman and Dipa Lemay as our vice chair. These guys spend a lot of hours volunteering for the town, so I wanted to thank them and all the other board members for their time and effort. It truly takes a lot, so appreciate them. And we have a special guest, Mr. Tristan Ewing. He is a high school senior at J.T. Williams Montessori School. He's job shadowing the planning department for the next two weeks, so we're happy to have him. And as far as developments, we've had three over the last month that have started construction. The Preserve subdivision is down south of 75, Old Town Village, off of North Providence, and then Blithem Town Homes will start at the end of the month. So I know our building inspections team is ready to go. So that's it.
Well, thank you for that. If Daniel and Tristan stand up, we recognize that you get up here. Both efforts are a lot of work, as I had vice chaired the planning board before in other county. It's a lot of time, effort, and energy that has to be put into this stuff, a lot of study. There's a lot of homework to be done on this. It's just not show up for the meeting and make a decision. There is a process. Oh my goodness, once again, we go through that again. Everybody's going to hate that word after a while. So, but there's a process, and again, the opportunity for somebody to come in and shadow and understand what those processes are and how it works and the intricacies, intricacies, I can't even say it, I'm talked out. Big surprise. But you know, it's nice to see somebody come up and volunteer as well. And I know it's part of a requirement that you're trying to achieve, but again, thank you for your volunteer time. And I want to again recognize Daniel for his leadership in the planning board. Thank you very much, guys. All right, fire department, Chief Sharp. My last meeting was a record meeting one side. This is going the other way, so.
Yes, yes. Well, this will be fairly quick. Just to give you an update over the last quarter of activity for the fire department. Had some really positive stuff happen in the last quarter. I couldn't believe all the stuff I was digging up as I was looking through it. Biggest thing between the last quarter of FY '23 and the first quarter of this year, this fiscal year, we've seen a big jump in our staffing, more people coming to work, signing up to work. I think that's a big play on, we went to market rate salaries and hourly rates, so people are more apt to pick up a shift. So as you can see, we went from 70%, and the reason I picked six-person is that's when we can split and cover Station 18 and Station 27. So we went from 70% to 85.6%, which you would expect to help on our response time, which our goal is 80%, less than eight minutes around the area. And as obvious, when we went to increase our six-person staffing, Station 27's overall response jumped up to 46.6%, almost half, under eight minutes, where before it was hovering in the 18% to 20% range. You can see Station 18 improved just a little bit, but that again is because Station 27 was staffed. So Station 18 isn't responding down to the Jars area, down to Mini Ranch, and then having to respond back up here on multiple calls. But again, 18 is the primary station to staff, so that's why you don't see quite the spike there. So what does that all mean? Those are great numbers. We really want to shoot for the 80%, but why do we shoot for that? Well, here's the reason. We had three cardiac arrests during this time where we got a return of spontaneous circulation. I know two of them walked out of the hospital without any deficits whatsoever. I met one of them at Autumn Treasures. Both of them are my age that walked out of the hospital, so that's, I like that. I'm waiting on the third one, but they had some circulation when we dropped them off the hospital. We interrupted an anaphylactic reaction. Patient was wheezing, having difficulty breathing, highs, rational, and ARDS. Gave her Epi, reversed that. You may have seen in our Facebook page, and I think it hit national media, you all know about the patient that we extricated from the car with a tree collapse. Again, thankfully that day, we had a lot of staff there, so we were able to get the rescue and all the tools out and get them out quickly. The big one, and I think, yes, I actually threw this on there, it's hard to see, but we had a patient in Millbridge fall while they were trimming bushes. They fell 30 feet, and when we got to them, they were unconscious and had no movement from the chest down. And we had to rig a system to use the tower to get them from the ground up to the road and into the ambulance, and they were flown to atrium downtown. What I found out after I was told about how their condition was, I told my folks, you did a fantastic job, but I don't think they're going to live, based on what they were telling me, the symptoms they encountered. And if they did, they'd be paralyzed. This person is not only going to live, but will walk again. Ended up with only two fractured vertebrae in their back, but what we were presented with did not look good at all for that individual. But again, we were well-staffed, we got there quickly, and we got our system set up and got the patient out into the hospital very rapidly. We also had a motor vehicle crash with a rollover. I think they flipped front over back, dumping a bunch of pool chemicals on 16 at Bonsgrove Church. Quickly with a bunch of people got up there, got the road closed, PD. And I got to say PD again, with all these, great group of guys to work with. Got the road closed, got everything taken care of, got Monroe Hazmat out there. And then this is the example of why we try and staff and get both stations staffed and get two trucks staffed at 18. Last Tuesday at 4:30 PM, Station 18 was dispatched for a fall with injury. At 4:43, we were dispatched for a reported structure fire. At 4:51, we were told we had another medical call. We weren't told it was a gunshot wound initially, and asked if we could send anybody to that. And I said, no, send another station, which would have been either Indian Land or Minto Springs. We were able to clear the structure fire quickly, redirected our truck to the medical call on the west side, ended up being a gunshot wound to the thigh. At 5:08 PM, we were requested for mutual aid from Minto Springs for another structure fire, then it'd be a chimney fire. So you can see, there's times in the day where if we don't have full staffing and have both trucks or more than both trucks staffed, we aren't going to cover everything that's happening in the town. Also in that quarter, we had our open house on October 8th and delivered fire safety messages through a scavenger hunt to over 80 families, which we estimated was well over 300 people. We took part in Autumn Treasures, had fire safety messages, Sparky out there, and we know we encountered at least 180 kids because that's how many helmets we had, and they're all gone. We also partnered with other community partners for nine fire safety events throughout the community in that quarter. That was a jump. What are we working on still? Improving our dispatch posts with Union County, so like when there's multiple calls, instead of them asking what we want them to do, they just do it so they get dispatched quicker. We're really working hard on our professional development. Again, Station 63, that's an ongoing process. We talked to the bank today, looks pretty good for financing, and hopefully the state's going to finally clear the erosion control plan so we can actually start moving dirt. And then again, looking at Station 64 on Kensington Drive, definitely needed. I can say that two of those cardiac arrests were up in the north end where Kensington would have been even better. So, and again, with Waxahaw Parkway East, Helms Road Extension we talked about, another vital aspect to getting us from 65, 69% to that 80% or better to getting around. Any questions on what your fire department's been doing the last couple of months?
Just a clarification question. I remember, I think I was hearing it from you maybe correctly, the gunshot wound was an accidental discharge.
That is correct.
All right, just want to make that clear. All right, you're doing a great job. You guys are working together really well, which is a lot of fun. I know you guys lobby, you know, to work us over, but actually, it's been a lot of fun. So any other thoughts and questions to our chief? All right, with that, losing my voice, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, with that, we're going to go at the end of our meeting here at closed session, so I'm going to look for a motion to take us into closed session, please.
Mayor, can I say one?
Yes.
Because normally we do board comments. I just also want to thank my Waxahaw family for dressing in the pink to represent breast cancer. I am a three-year breast cancer survivor, and I remember how wonderful this family was when I was going through that during my time on the board. It was also during COVID, which made it much more difficult. So I will always remember how you all supported me. And just to remind everyone to make sure you women have your mammograms and self-exams, and men can also get breast cancer as well, so watch for any symptoms. Thank you.
Congratulations on that, by the way, again. So glad you took that up, committee. Appreciate that. All right, nothing around the horn to get us into closed session, so go back to request for the motion.
Motion to go into closed session?
All right, motion's up. Oh, I have to just...
It's for personnel?
It's for personnel, that's right. On my page.
There's a next word reference you need to read, too.
Oh.
All right, so you want to restate it?
Including the motion, who is to go in there with the board, the mayor?
All right, so make that...
We go reread that?
Remotion?
Okay. A motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318A6 to discuss personnel matter and...
And include.
And include the town attorney. That's it.
All right. Good on that one?
Good one.
I love it. All right, so that motion is now up. So all in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. Thanks.